Welcome, everyone, to the Tuesday, June 3, 2025, Tommater City Council. We will start off with roll call.
Councilmember Lea Adalhoff.
Present.
Councilmember Angela Jefferson.
She said, "Present," with her microphone up.
Councilmember Joan Cathy.
Present.
Councilmember Eileen Swarthout.
Present.
Councilmember Michael Althouser.
Present.
Councilmember Peter Agabe.
Present.
Councilmember Kelly Von Holtz.
Present.
And Mayor Debbie Sullivan.
I am present. Join me in our sweep to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. This evening, we have a one proclamation, and it is for LGBTQIA2S+ Community Pride Month. So I will go ahead and read the proclamation. Whereas the city of Tommater recognizes that one of the greatest strengths is diversity of its people and longstanding tradition of upholding the dignity of the individuals supporting legal equity and fair treatment for all people and ensuring that acts of discrimination and hatred are not to be tolerated. And whereas, in 1993, the city of Tommater passed its first ordinance to protect people of discrimination by adding sexual orientation to the unfair housing practices law. Whereas, in 1997, Tommater became the smallest city in the United States to grant domestic partnership benefits to its employees and since enacting several policies to ensure equity for all Tommater residents, such as the Equal Benefits Ordinance. And whereas, the city of Tommater is a national leader in affirming the civil rights and the innate dignity for all people and encourages the free expression of all cultural traditions and personal talents for the social enrichment and betterment of the community. And whereas, Tommater's diversity policy statement affirms its belief that diversity strengthens workforce competency and performance, celebrates the values individual differences, serves increasingly social diverse society, ensuring the relevance of the city's mission, program, and services, and is critical to the city's ability to serve every resident. And whereas, in recognition of Stonewall uprising, considered the tipping point for the gay rights movement in the United States each June, Americans come together to celebrate LGBTQIA2S+ Community Pride Month and honor our contribution to society. Now, therefore, I, Debbie Sullivan, the mayor of the city of Tommater, does hereby proclaim June 2025 as LGBTQIA2S+ Community Pride Month, and I call upon the people of the city of Tommater to join in celebrating diversity and promoting inclusion and equal protection under the law and further encourage people to join me in eliminating discriminatory policies and practices towards any culture, race, or group. Thank you. So with that, now we will move to public comment. I'll have staff go ahead and grab the sign-up sheet. And we have no one online. Perfect. Thank you. All right. So we're going to have a public hearing and a public comment. So this is for the public comment portion. So I will, you will, so those who have signed up, this is city business not related to the public hearing, as I mentioned, and the sign-up sheet, which I now have, was available in the back for people to comment. When I call your name, please come to the podium, speak into the microphone, and state your name and contact information for the record. Each individual will be limited to one three-minute period to make their remarks regarding the number of topics they wish to address. Speakers may not comment upon, promote, advocate, or oppose, or speak against pending initiatives, ballot measures, or candidates. All comments shall be directed towards the council as a whole and not to individual council members of the, or in the audience. Please refrain from disruptive behavior, such as booing, hissing, audible comments, cheering, or collapping. So with that, I have one name on the public comment list, which is Eric Johnson, if you want to come to the podium and state your name and your, and your address for the record.
Good evening, council and mayor. My name is Eric Johansson. For the record, I can give you a specific address, but suffice to say, I live on Tommater Hill. There was a work session by the council on May 27 with a presentation by Chuck Denny and David Nacandry about historic routes and marking in the city of Tommater. My wife and I attended that, and we thought it was excellent. Some really good ideas there. Just one other thing we'd like, or I would like, to you consider when you're thinking about historic routes. David talked a lot about settler history, which is certainly important. The one thing I didn't hear him mention, and I would hope you would consider, is involvement of the tribes. Because if you look at settler history in Tommater, it's probably like this, a few hundred years. Tribe history is like thousands of years. I'm not saying that settler history isn't important. Of course it is. But please include the tribes. I will submit some additional comments in writing via email, but just some for your consideration. Again, I thought it was a really excellent presentation, some really good ideas, but definitely encourage you to include the tribes in that process as well. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no one signed up for public comment. If you would like to speak for public comment that is not about the public hearing, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. So is one speaking for the others?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, Mayor, that gives us, like, nine minutes.
No. No, it doesn't. No.
My name is Terry Harper. I'm general manager from Masonic Memorial Park up on North Street in Cleveland. And I wanted to talk today about this neglected property directly to our west, what you guys know as the brewery complex. This past week and a half ago, actually, here's a part of the police report. On May 24, we reported that we found that our well, we had no water, no irrigation. Oh, by the way, this is Justin Lash. He's been the, he's been the ground supervisor for about 12 years. This is Lyndy, Lindsey Anderson, and she's my assistant manager for operations. So our guys went down and checked out what was going on. In case you don't know, we own a small sliver of property that goes down to the brewery plain down there, and that's where our commercial wellhead is at. And it's been pretty much maintenance-free. We've had issues. We happened to reset it. If you've ever climbed that bluff there next to Cleveland, you'll know how treacherous that is. But we've been pretty blessed for 10 years, and we haven't been, we haven't had anything stolen from that well facility. We've not had any vandalism. We secure it really tight. Well, sometime on the night of May 23, someone broke in through the roof hatch that's there so you can lift the well drive out, and they destroyed it. They completely destroyed the well. They took out controls. They took out anything, I guess, they thought they could make a few bucks for. Right now, our standing cost for that is about $60,000. We are a small nonprofit. We make about $400,000 a year, and probably 80% of that is for labor. And it devastates us. Because we're a nonprofit, everything we make goes back into our park. And if you don't know about our park, we started burying there in about 1851. We've been business in this community for almost 200 years. We have no fences around our park. We don't close gates. We have thousands of people a day that walk through our park. They walk their dogs. We see people, after they've had a stroke, walking with walkers. And then we see them, months later, walking with a cane. And then we see them, months later, walking on their own. And then we see them walking faster than any of us can. We've gotten to know the community really well there. I think that our park has been a wonderful asset to the community in that regard. We enjoy having our over 1,000 visitors a year on 4th of July to watch the fireworks show. And, well, so without water, if my park browns out, and I'm trying to do what I can to fast-track things, but there's insurance involved and all these other things. If I can't get irrigation in my park, I can't have people up there for 4th of July because one child with a sparkler will burn that entire neighborhood down. So I guess my, my situation, what I wanted to come here and let you know, is that there are communities all across the country that are reclaiming these neglected properties. And there's got to be something through health authority, or fire authority, or someone that can help expedite getting control and security of that facility.
So we can get back with you on that.
Okay. Can I give you my address and phone number?
I believe we have that. I think staff, we already have that.
All right. Well, I would enjoy having a sit-down conversation with any or all of you so we can go into a little bit more detail.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else who's not signed up for the public comment portion wish to come to speak? All right. With that, we will move to the consent calendar. So do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Second.
Okay. So I made, I moved. And Peter, second. Okay. Thank you. Any discussion on the motion? All right. With that, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. All right. The motion carries. With that motion, we have approved the minutes of City Council Work Session of April 22, payment vouchers, service provider agreement with Herrera for the nutrient reduction enhancement maintenance plan revision, grant amendment to the Department of Ecology for Pioneer Park Restoration Project Phase 2, service provider agreement with Centec for the Pioneer Park Restoration Project Phase 2 Amendment 3, local agency agreement with Project Prospektus of the Washington State Department of Transportation for the Second Avenue bicycle and pedestrian improvements, local agency agreement with Project Prospektus for the Washington State Department of Transportation for Somerset Hill, fish pass, fish passage barrier removal, and local agency agreement with Project Prospektus for the Washington State Department of Transportation for Percival Creek Fish Passage Barrier Removal, Barrier Removal, bond underwriting engagement letter with DA Davidson, reappointment of Erin Carrier, Joel Hecker, and Mike Cully for the Board of Parks and Recreation Commissioners, and Thunder in the Valley 4th of July fireworks display permit. And that is it. Lots of things on that consent agenda. Next, we are going to be doing a public hearing on R 2025-010 Six-Year Transportation Improvement Plan, and Brandon Hicks will help present that.
All right. Well, good evening, mayor and councilmembers. For those in the chambers here or online, my name is Brandon Hicks. I'm the city's transportation and engineering director. Can we get the, thank you. I'm here today to discuss the city's 2026 to 2031 Transportation Improvement Program, otherwise known as the TIP. I'm just going to call it that for the rest of this because it's less of a mouthful. The point today is just to go over some of the projects that have been added or deleted since last year's TIP, or still current TIP, and then to take any questions that you have before a public hearing. And so with that, I'll just jump right into the presentation. I think I can control it. So the reason that we do this is that we are required to adopt a new TIP annually by RCW 35.77.010. We have to adopt it by June 30 of each year. We actually have to submit it to Thurston Regional Planning Council so that they can input it into their planning documents. And then anything that's going to be pursued within the four-year window that receives certain funding also has to go into the state's version of the TIP or the state transportation improvement program. The projects that are included are supposed to be those that are regionally significant or that we anticipate receiving state or federal grants from. So on this slide, I have a map that was included in your packets. It shows the projects that are called out within the six-year TIP, red being capacity, blue being multimodal, and green being preservation or enhancement. As you can see, we've got a pretty good portion of the city covered there. What you are not seeing are any of the programmatic projects. So anything that's going to come out of our TBD-funded Pavement Preservation Program, our Multimodal Improvements Program, and then Safe Routes to School projects that we pursue. So just starting off with the capacity projects that are included in the plan, I've got the four, the four new projects highlighted, or they're bolded there. They're kind of hard to see, I'm noticing from here. But starting with Old Highway 99, down through the Tommater Boulevards there, it is in alphabetical order. But the only actual new one is highlighted in yellow, and that's Roundabout at Tommater Boulevard and Henderson Boulevard. We're going to try to start design or planning on that so that we can try to figure out what we need in the future. And I envision we'll be adding construction to that, to the TIP, within the next few years. The other three are not necessarily new. They've been pulled out of larger corridor or interchange projects as singular elements that are more, I guess, bite-sized. They're smaller projects that can be taken on based on funding that we anticipate we might be able to secure. A couple things I want to highlight. One is the East Street Connection. That one's been on there for a while. We do still, we have a planning document that we put together a few years ago. I think it was completed in 2018. It started long before then. And it came out of the Brewery District Plan, and that's needing to get traffic out of the Brewery District, A, because it's clogged right now. We don't have any more capacity. B, it's, it's impossible to really make it more of a city-type center with all the traffic that's going through there. We can't get bikes through it. We can't get pedestrians through it adequately. And so we went through a pretty big process of going through a bunch of different options to try to get traffic across the valley. We only have two crossings in the valley in the city, and not ideal, not necessarily safe in an emergency. And there was, I want to say, five or six possible alignments that came out of the study. The consultant selected a preferred route. That is still what is included in all of our planning documents that we have because we haven't updated any of them. But we have since looked at another possible alternative that doesn't impact some of the, namely, one, one neighborhood out there as much. I actually prefer the new alignment because, from a transportation standpoint, it does intersect at a better location, as far as I'm concerned. But we can't really tell if it's going to work until we go out and do survey, cultural studies, and a bunch of different items. So there is one new possible alternative that's not included in the plan. One of the first steps that we'll have when we secure funding at some point in the future for design, which is going to be a lift, is we will start by getting some survey data and then start doing value engineering to see if this other alternative is perhaps a better, better alternative. The other one I want to point out, also not new, it's Henderson Boulevard, 58th Avenue to the Bridge. There's some words cut out behind the image there. So it's, it's, it's to the Deschutes River Bridge there on Henderson Boulevard. But it's not new, boy, that's hard to see, too. It's not a new project because we had the bridge in there. What has changed that's very significant is we are proposing to put a roundabout at the Pioneer Park entrance. It's not very often that you see a driveway considered as part of a capacity project. But when you have major traffic generators like this park, they are considered capacity. And I'm sure anybody who's been there while the weather's warm and there's people out in their tubes, or soccer's going on, or baseball or softball, you can tell that it is, is an absolute mess. It is very hard to get out of there. Sometimes the queue is backed up all the way to the far end of the parking lot. So the idea is both to handle that congestion, the original plan to try to get pedestrians and bikes across the river there because there is no facilities, and to slow down traffic. And so a roundabout is a perfect solution to handle all of those. So right now, the goal would be that within the next six years, we'll be able to begin major planning and perhaps design to make this happen at some point in the near future because it is a critical part of our, a critical missing component of our bike and pedestrian network. When we get the Deschutes Valley Trail punched through, if we can get this done, there's going to be a really good bike loop around a good portion of the city. The next group is the Preservation, Enhancement, and Maintenance Projects. There are no new projects in this particular category this year. So all of these have been presented several times. And so I don't really have a whole lot to say here other than we are currently working on acquiring property for the X Street Roundabout. It is designed, and we hope to go to construction within the next two years. We should be starting design on the Somerset Hill Culvert replacement here in the near future. We are always designing pavement maintenance program projects. That's something that we're working on year-round. Every year, we kind of use it as the space in between when we're starting and stopping another project. And that's really what I'll highlight on this grouping. The last grouping is the multimodal projects. So this is where we house our bike, pedestrian, and traffic calming type projects. The image there is the Second Avenue pedestrian and bicycle improvements. Part of that project, this is specifically a non-circular roundabout at Second Avenue and Lindwood Avenue. It's going to be first in the region. It's not, not the first time it's been done in the nation, but it was the first time that I was aware of it when we started going down this path. And it's being designed this way because we don't have to acquire any right-of-way to construct it. In the future, this will be replaced with a multi-lane roundabout. That's probably at least 20 years away. And we currently have a situation where it's a little bit of a confusing intersection because there's through and right-turn approaches or lanes at each approach. And so when you come up, it's not like a typical four-way stop where you're looking for three other vehicles. You're looking for seven. So it does get a little bit confusing. We don't get a lot of crashes here, but we do get a lot of concerned people calling in. And this particular element is likely why we were able to secure the grant, which makes it so that we're actually doing pedestrian improvements all the way up to B Street and bike improvements. We're going to be adding bike lanes. The only new project in this grouping is, sorry, I didn't have a lot of time to come up with the name. I might try to shorten it by the time we start to work. But 93rd Avenue, Tiger Lily Street to City Limits. I don't have an image of where it is, but just if you're aware, 93rd Avenue, downward the preserve, is that 93rd Avenue. If you go to the east a little bit, you run into a big hill. That, this project, we are proposing to lower that hill by between 7 to 12 feet. And the reason is, is there's sight distance issues there. When you're coming over the hill, there is legal access at the bottom of the hill that you can't see until it would be too late to break. Somebody has acquired the property and they would like to develop it. So that's reason one. Reason two is on the bottom of the hill, so the downhill side to the north of 93rd Avenue. The school has acquired that property, and they do have some interest in perhaps constructing an elementary school in the near future. And then third, we are going to be running some new water main across that section of roadway, and it does require blasting rock because it is solid bedrock there. So it just makes sense. We've got all these moving parts here. I also forgot to mention, we don't have bike or pedestrian facilities here. And in order to get pedestrians up over a big hill like that, we've got to lower it, otherwise it's too steep. So for those four reasons, it's been added. So the projects that are being removed from the TIP, the first four are not actually being removed. They've been combined into a single project. And so the list got shorter, so I put them there. With our current design, we are designing the entire remainder of the trail under one contract. And so we are matching that right now. There's a possibility that we will pull out Segment C in about two years when we start construction on that because we do have federal funding for it. But right now, it's cleanest just to make it match our design. The Tommater Boulevard Interchange is being taken out for the exact opposite reason. We are separating it into other, into individual projects. So it is still there. It's just two separate projects. Old Highway 99, 73rd Avenue to 79th Avenue, we are pulling that out because it is not a project that is going to, it's not feasible to complete it within six years. So what we have done is we have pulled out two individual projects that we know we're going to undertake. And then the remainder will be added in when it's reasonable to assume we have capacity or funding for them. The Brewery District Plan Streetscape Improvements Project has been pulled out because it does not meet the regionally significant definition. The, the elements that were included in that project are likely going to be components of the larger roundabout and roadway projects that we are going to be undertaking when we can figure out East Street or sooner, if we can come up with a magic way to kind of move people around. So right now, it doesn't belong in the TIP mainly for the non-regional significance component. Rural Road is the same deal. It's not regionally significant. It does have the added difficulty of some pretty big environmental impacts. We are continuing to look for practical solutions that maybe we can figure out a way to get a slightly widened shoulder on one side or the other. It would not meet requirements for calling it a pedestrian or bike facility, but it is practical to assume that people are going to step out of the lane and into a shoulder if they can. And then the last one is the Traffic Signal Controller and Detection Upgrade Project. That one is being removed because we will be installing all of the components this year. We, it is a federally funded project. The, the federal dollars are procuring all of the material. And we are going to do in-house, our signal technicians are going to go out and do a lot of work at a lot of signals in the city. So it's a pretty good deal. So that's it. I made it a brief presentation today for a TIP, and I'm not doing this, whatever this is. So with that, the recommended action is to hold a public hearing in consideration of adopting Resolution Number R 2025-010 Six-Year Transportation Improvement Program Update for 2026 to 2031. And then the second recommended action I'll hold for after the public hearing. With that, is there any question?
Any questions before I open up for public comment? Councilmember Swarthout.
Thank you, Brandon. On the TIP, so when do they decide the projects? Since we benefit, Tommater benefited when we received the TIP funding for the, all the roundabouts on Capitol Boulevard. Is that correct?
So we don't receive TIP funding. The TIP is just a programmatic document.
Okay.
So.
But they select from that list?
They do. So in order to get federal grants or some state grants, your project has to be on the TIP to even apply.
So I was just curious if there's any of our projects that might be rising up? Because I'm, when do they, when does, because it's a local decision, right? But is it the TPBU that makes the decision on where the projects go?
So Thurston Regional Planning Council administers, and the full council itself makes the decision on which projects are selected for the dollars that they administer. So they do the STP, the CMAC, those types of fundings. There are other grant authorities and agencies that also make selections, such as Transportation Improvement Board, or Washington State Department of Transportation does selections in-house as well for non-federally funded projects. But the TRPC process, I get a little bit confused because there is sometimes redistributed fundings where other regions aren't able to spend all their money. Some becomes available to us. I believe that the typical cycle is four years, but we, we generally see calls every two years for either redistributed funds or the larger pot that us and all the other agencies in the county are trying to get. for either redistributed funds or the larger pot that us and all the other agencies in the county are trying to get. And we've, we've actually been very successful. This year, we, or this last cycle, I have made the suggestion, and I've spoken to this council and to city administrator Lisa Parks, that because we're not able to hire enough engineers right now, we haven't really been pursuing new projects. We've been looking for funding on existing projects. And so, this last cycle, we received a little over $2.5 million for the Deschutes Valley Trail. It was an existing project. All it requires is a tip amendment, and we can start spending money. But we, we don't need it in this case. For X Street Roundabout, as an example, we have over $5 million in federal funding, and it has to be on the tip to get it. Or the Tumwater Boulevard Interchange, we have $2.5 million, and that has to be on the tip. So, there's, a lot of our projects are on the tip, and that's the only way we can get funding.
I think too, just being on TRPC, I think, to your credit, that we were shovel-ready on some of these projects. So, we were able to take advantage of the funding when it was available, so, yeah. I appreciate that.
Any other questions before I open the public comment portion? All right. So, with that, I am going to open up the public testimony portion of our public hearing. At this time, when I call your name, please come to the podium, speak into the microphone, state your name and address for the record, and please limit your remarks to the three minutes, and we have a timer. And please keep your testimony relevant to the subject of the public hearing. And so, when I call your name, please come to the podium. And... First person on the list is Larry Zalinski. I'm sorry if I'm not pronouncing your name correctly. Anyone by the name of Larry here? Larry? Okay, did you want to speak? No, okay. Okay. Okay, perfect. Chris Powell. Okay, that's not a public hearing portion, or a public hearing, okay. Terry Hess, same. Logan Hess, okay. The Masonic Memorial already was here. Patricia Riley? Did you want to speak? Okay, go ahead. Three minutes, state your name and address for the record.
My name's Patricia Riley, and I live at 108 Roberts Road Southeast in Tumwater. And I am here concerned about the E Street connection. There's been a lot going on for the last three years regarding E Street. And we can't seem to get a common census of the route. And I know that supposedly you have to get the funding before you can do any plans or design. But every map we see is the same one. It shows it going across and then down and up right behind our street, between the big well, million gallon well that I don't think is in use anymore, and our property, which is the most forested and the most lives, our wildlife area. And we've come up with proposals, and, but yet, we always see the same one. And all we would like is some clearer visibility. Now, Brandon said that he liked the other one going up to South Street, which we don't have a problem with at all. But all we see is the one going right behind our street. And so, I guess I would like to direct this to Brandon, saying that it'd be nice if we could have a meeting with just you and get everything cleared up, and so that we know where we're sitting at. Because, see, this is the first I've heard that this is like within a six-year period. Because we kept hearing it's going to be, oh, six, seven years before anything's even, you know, going for funding. So, we would just like to get it set so that we can quit worrying about the route that none of us in the neighborhood or across the street want. And it would be the less disruptive, and it wouldn't affect houses, and, and it'd be at an intersection where the roundabout could go easily. And so, that's, you know, our main concern is just, is, we would just like some clarity. So...
Great, thank you. I'll have staff get back with you. Tom Donitz.
Hi, Tom Donitz, DOE-NITZ 126 Roberts Road Southeast. I'm sorry, I'm really tired of fighting City Hall. I, I came here to yell out a bunch of people, but the two people that I should yell out aren't here. The representative from Lot, and the representative from SCJ Alliance. They're the ones who put us in this mess. If it hadn't been for them, you guys never would have designed that road that's going up behind our house. That's all because of them, and they're not even involved in it. And so, you know, I'm not, I don't even want to yell at Brandon, because I like Brandon. You know, I can talk to him, stuff I really enjoy. And so, now I'm finding out that SCJ Alliance isn't involved. All we want is some, is some input from our community. We're the only community in the city of Tumwater that will be affected by this route, the only one. So, at least let us have a couple, have two people in to give input and everything. We're the ones who live in the neighborhood. We know what the traffic patterns, you know. And, and we've come up with a couple of solutions that are in there. There's one that, that's, it's, I had already proven it before. It's less environmentally damaging. It's in a better location to put this roundabout on Tumwater Boulevard. In fact, the spot that I had picked out, it happens to be where the city of Tumwater Police Department set up the speed trap. So, by putting a roundabout there, you will automatically slow down traffic and save, you know, instead of putting them on blind corners and everything. We, we understand that, that the city doesn't want to go with the original plan, which was okayed by the, by the city council in 2015. Understand that. That's why the route we had, it's a compromise. You still can use almost 90, you know, 80% of the original plan. It just goes up the hill in a different location. You don't have to slice away the entire hillside to put in a 3.5, no, 3.5 million dollar, that was in 2017 dollars, retaining wall. This area, the grade is easier, there's less forest, it just makes sense. And, and, you know, if you want, with the money you save from the $3.5 million retaining wall, you can give our neighborhood a sound barrier wall instead of the chain link fence, you know. But it, it's just, you know, since, since it seems like we're back to square one with, with one plan in mind, at least give us some input, let us sit in on it. You know, when, when the comprehensive plan was coming up meeting, I got a, I got an email from somebody. So, apparently, they thought I was worthwhile to contact, to tell people in the neighborhood. And the neighborhood wants to work with us. And I've already told some people that if we can work on a solution, I can get the whole neighborhood behind you on this. But you got to work with us, and so, that's all.
Thank you. And Brandon, I know, has your contact information. James, I'm sorry, Cruz Cars? Yeah. Sorry, I couldn't read the, I couldn't read that.
Javier Cruz, 220 Roberts Road Southeast, and I'm actually here with the same concern with the E Street connection. It seems like all time goes by, and there's no clarity on this project. I mean, we have, and, and I'm, I'm sure you've got a busy schedule. It continues to be that it's presented as, it has to be funded before anything can be made public. And that is our concern. There's not a clear communication on what is actually involved in the, with the project itself. What are we looking at? What is the council voting for, for any funding? And as a member of the community, we're actually concerned that, we just want to know what is, what is being considered before we can do anything forward. Appreciate your attention, thank you.
Thank you. Is the next one Alex Cruz? Did you want to come to the podium? Okay, great, thank you. Anyone else want to come and speak in the public comment portion before I close the public hearing?
And we have no one online either.
No one online. Okay, okay. Larry, come to the...
I live on, on 214 Roberts Road, and I just, I don't have much to add to what Tom had to say. He's very knowledgeable of what's going on there, and it affects our whole neighborhood there. And, and I think he's laid out a plan that, that works, and I'm just here in support of him along with the rest of the neighborhood, that he's got, got the right ideas going. We need to get the council to get with the program. And putting a road in in our backyard does not make any sense. That's it.
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak on this topic? All right, with that, I have closed the public comment portion of the public hearing. Any comments by, or action by council members? Yeah, so, did you want to make a motion? All right.
I have a question.
Oh, yes, Councilmember Kathy, what was your question?
My question is, since the last time I heard some of these folks from the neighborhood that have just spoken, and spoken very well, have we made any changes in what they saw the last time that we had a hearing on this, or they attended?
So, we haven't made any changes to the document itself. It's a document that's produced by the consultant. We can't go in and modify it. But what we did do since the last time we had communication, and it may have been a couple of communications ago because we presented it, I believe, we looked at it, at another alternative, and that's the one that I was trying to describe earlier. It maintains the same path that the preferred alternative in the plan has across the river and the tracks, and it starts to do the same curve, but then we curve it back further north in order to intersect at South Street, which puts it, I don't know the exact number, but easily hundreds, maybe well over 1,000 feet further away.
No, the public comment portion's over, I think. He can, you can get the info.
Are you waiting for me to speak?
Yeah, no, no, Councilmember Kathy, you're fine. I think Brandon knows exactly where, you've talked, right, to them to know where that location is at.
And so...
Okay. We'll, we'll, we'll get, we'll get, have staff talk to you.
We can connect. But the, the alternative that we had come up with, that was in addition to the ones that were in the plan, that particular one from a transportation standpoint and a cost standpoint, is actually, as long as the topography is what is shown in Thurston County's database, it's actually a very feasible one. We just need to verify it by completing survey. Requires less walls, the slope is much less because we're taking a longer distance by kind of doing a chicane. But, but I will, I will speak with some folks and try to figure out what the other possible alternatives are. There are a few that are in the plan that never could have happened. You know, when you go through planning for, for street networks or any roads, most of the time, it starts out as, okay, we want to get from A to B, I'll just highlight a straight line. And then, I kind of like it squiggly, and they'll just kind of play with a bunch of stuff. It's kind of like when you have the boards, when you're doing a meeting and you're having everybody kind of go in and pin what you want. It's kind of the same deal. There are some of those in there that were never feasible. But either way, the alignment is not set, and it is something we will determine by going through value engineering at the beginning of design. And it is not actually in the next... So, we're keeping it in the tip because that's what we have to do to secure funding. Having it in there is not us saying, we think we're going after this. We just don't have a choice but to put it there.
So, we're not saying that it'll be done, that anything is going to happen in some drastic or good way in the next six years?
There's no guarantee. It'd be hard for me to say that I believe that there's going to be funding available for a project of that magnitude. It's, it's above $50 million. And right now, it's, there's a big question mark in what funding will be available. So, we just keep it in there in case a good source for funding does come up, we're ready to apply. And it is only the design phase and, and right-of-way phase that's included in the tip. Construction is not included in the tip.
Okay, I just was hoping, I remember the discussion about this before, and hearing some of these same folks who would end up with this in their backyard speak. And I'm just wanting everything to be as clear as possible, and the timeline, and what happens in those timelines, clear tonight, and have their questions answered. So, thanks, Brandon, appreciate it.
All right, any other questions? Councilmember Al Taser.
I, I think you largely answered this, but we, we do a six-year plan just so that we can plan out for the future. But that doesn't necessarily mean that projects will be completed within six years. A lot of these that are on the plan, I, I wish a lot of them will be completed within six years, but likely, a lot of these will not be completed within six years, right? It's just for a future planning.
Well, what's in the plan is stuff that we, most of it is stuff that we reasonably believe we will be undertaking within the next six years. There are a couple that we have in there to where funding does come available, then we're doing it.
Yeah.
But we have to have it there, otherwise we can't get the funding.
Yeah, and if something was not on the plan, that would essentially mean that we've sort of moved on from considering that project at this point in time.
Correct. The only caveat to that is if we know that this particular program is coming out in the near future, we can do a tip amendment, but then you have to see me again.
Any other questions? All right, do I hear a motion?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution R 2025-010, Six-Year Transportation Improvement Program Update for 2026, 2031.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, it's been moved in second. Any discussion on the motion? All right, with that, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, nay. All right, the motion carries. Thank you, everyone. And it's a long-term project, and you can definitely get with staff and have further discussions. All right, so, now we have council considerations. First one is the 5901 Black Lake-Beltmore Southwest 10% Annexation Petition. It's Tumwater, Tum-25-0453. So, Brandon, Brad, too many Brads and Brandons tonight. Brad?
Whomever you wish me to be. Brad Medred, Community Development Director, want to present, this is actually the second annexation application the council has seen in as many months, so you'll probably recognize some of the processes we're going through. This is for 5901 Black Lake and Beltmore Road Southwest. It's a 10% annexation petition. My purpose tonight is to present the application, explain what the 60% annexation method process is, where we are in that process, and talk about next steps. Little background on this particular annexation. The owner of the property, Black Lake-Beltmore Road, is within Tumwater Reserving Growth Area, has filed petitions requesting to be annexed by the city. A 10% annexation petition application was filed with the city on April 25th. We deem that complete on April 29th after payment of the application review fees. Because the property owner owns all the property included in the proposed annexation area, they had filed annexation petitions representing both the 10% and 60% of the value of the property proposed for annexation, so they've accomplished a couple steps as part of this process just because they're dealing with just one property. The property owners indicated their willingness, pardon me, to assume their fair share of city indebtedness, and are willing to accept the land use designation as it exists in the zone district for their property. Staff is not aware of any pending development applications before Thurston County for the project. The proposed annexation area consists of a single parcel located on the northwest of the intersection of Black Lake-Beltmore Road and 60th Avenue Southwest, and is about 9.72 acres in size. The parcel has a current land use designation and zone district of single-family low-density residential, and is... residential and is currently undeveloped. This is a map showing the parcel. It's that rectangle in orange. The red line is the current city boundary. So, they are proposing a connection to the city limits at Black Lake Belmore Road. The initial request before the city council tonight is the 10% annexation petition. There is a note within the petition saying once a complete application and petition has been filed, that the council will set a date no later than 60 days after filing of the petition for a meeting with the property owner. The purpose of the meeting is for the council to determine whether or not they will accept, reject, or geographically modify the proposed annexation area, whether the city council will require adoption of new land use designation for the area to be annexed, and whether the city council will require assumption of existing city indebtedness for the annexed area. Little background again on the assumption of indebtedness, this is from the annexation of Washington Cities and Towns, which is produced by the MSRC. Notes that annexation statutes authorize the council to require property in an area to be annexed to assume as condition of annexation a pro-rata share of the annexing cities and then outstanding indebtedness that has been approved by voters contracted or incurred prior to or existing at the date of annexation. So, essentially, if they are annexed within the city, they would be transferring the property taxes they currently are paying to the county road tax and to the McLean Fire District to the city general fund as well as the Park District. I think the difference, if we're looking at a house of about half a million dollars, about $50 in addition to what they're paying currently under the county. This is a flow chart showing the 60% annexation method, starting in the upper left-hand corner. We initiated the 60% petition annexation method through the filing of the petitions. We tonight are dealing with the meeting on the annexation proposal. If the council agrees and moves forward with the annexation, we'll proceed with the contents and filing of the 60% petition, which we currently have and the form needed. That in turn will be filed with the county assessor's office, which will then determine whether that's a legal valid petition, its legal sufficiency of the petition application. Once we have that back, we'll come back to the council with a resolution accepting the petition. That is the step that we will need to get the application in front of the boundary review board for their review. There's a two-step process within the county in terms of how annexations are approved. Initially, the council has to make a formal action. We can't necessarily accept the annexation outright because it has to go through the BRB first, but we need to set it up to go to the BRB, which is the purpose of the resolution. The boundary review board will then review, determine whether they approve of it or not. If they approve, it will come back to the council for a hearing on the ordinance adopting the annexation. Once that's in place, then that determines the effective date of the annexation and the notice of annexation process that goes through the state to finalize the annexation. The recommendation from the General Government Committee, which met last month, is to accept the proposal to annex with no modifications. Do not propose any amendments to the existing land use designations or zone districts, so as they are currently in the code, they shall remain. And then finally, require the annexed area to assume city indebtedness. So, the initial request before the council tonight is to discuss the petition with the applicants and then decide whether to move consideration of the proposed annexation forward. I believe we have representatives from the petition in the audience available to answer any questions, so I will turn it over to the council.
Right, any questions or comments? Councilmember Swartah.
Thank you. Let's see, so that square that we're looking at, is that, as far as the zoning goes, you were saying that it is for single-family, as far as that's what is currently zoned with the county, correct?
That is correct. It, it's, has the same zoning as the city, but within the county.
Okay, so it does meet our zoning, so we don't have to do anything extra on that.
No. Our current, our, we had worked out all those issues with the county in the last update of the joint plan on 2019. And then any changes that we propose going forward as part of the current comprehensive plan update, we'll deal with at the very same time in the joint.
Okay. And that we're so popular, this, like, we talked about this before, this is the second one, I've been on council for 10 years, and I just think about how difficult it was to get the islands and how now we have people that want us, so that's amazing. So, and then I'm curious when the boundary review board will meet, because they probably don't have a very full agenda as well with annexations, so we're throwing them some extra work.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, all right.
Any other questions or comment? Yes, Councilmember Jefferson?
Yes, Brad, where is this located on the map?
This is located on the western edge of the city, not too far from Black Lake. So, it's on Black Lake Belmore, which is the main north-south road that parallels Black Lake. The properties that are on the west side of Black Lake Belmore are primarily within the county, and the properties on the east side are within the city. And it's probably right in the middle in terms of the western boundary of the city.
All right, thank you, Brad.
Right, Councilmember Doha?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess one question, if it's okay to ask, why do you want to be in Tom Water? Not Brad, but.
Oh, come to the podium. Thank you.
Eventually, we would like to develop the property, and we've done a few projects in the city of Tom Water, and you guys are great to deal with. We find it's more expeditious than the county, and it's more fun.
I was not expecting that answer, but thank you. I guess the question I had is, in the past, when we were looking at the Black Lake area, there is talks about having that be on the county just regards to utilities and services and access. So, how does that, if this comes in, how does that with those future talks you've had, Brad, of consistency and uniformity of services out there?
Yeah, and, and that, thank you for bringing that discussion up again. That has been something that had occurred in the background for a while. One of the things that we had initially thought about when we were doing the 2016 update was looking at that particular area and deciding whether it made sense for the city to serve that area. What we also kind of looked at as part of that process is the areas sort of on the extreme north and the south ends of Black Lake being more likely to be less possible to serve for a variety of reasons, environmental reasons are number one, the pattern of development that has occurred already and the likelihood of redevelopment. This particular area and in this particular sort of central section of that area is less prone to those kinds of concerns and issues. And this also doesn't go to Black Lake itself, so we're not dealing with shoreline issues and those kinds of things with this particular property. There's existing services within the immediate vicinity there that makes sense for it to still be within the area. So, we have not necessarily looked at that question recently, but from our perspective, this doesn't fall into an area of concern for future discussion.
Right, like, we're not creating another island, which we just got rid of all the islands. Okay, thank you, Brad. Thank you for your answer.
Councilmember Swartah?
I did want to ask about the, what, what city services are out there? Because I'm looking at the, what's on 60th, it looks like those are all individual lots, and then across Black Lake Belmore is Jody Court. So, is that all, do we, is that all city water and city sewer at this point?
It will be city water and city sewer, yes.
They will be, or no?
For the area that would, it potentially annexed, that would have to be extended to, but it's within a reasonable distance to do.
So, we, but currently, we have services that we're providing services to those neighborhoods. Okay, right.
All right, any other?
Jones.
Oh, Councilmember Kathy.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm, I just wanted to ask, because I can't remember, isn't that the, the school out there, isn't that in the Tom Water School District?
Yes, the, the school that you're referring to, the elementary school, whose name escapes me now, is to the south of this particular annexation area, and it is currently being served by the city. I believe it's within the city and served by city services, so.
Yeah, I would think that if that is in our school district, they're receiving services. And that's on the other side of the street that you're talking about, correct?
Yes, that's on the western side of the street, correct.
Thanks.
All right, any other questions? All right, do I hear any? Councilmember Althausser.
Thank you, Mayor. I move that we accept the proposed annexation petition and initiate the annexation process for the 5901 Black Lake Belmore Southwest 10% annexation petition, Tom 250453, as recommended by the General Government Committee at our May 14, 2025 meeting.
I'll second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Althausser, seconded by Councilmember Von Holtz. Any further discussion on the motion? All right, with that, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Thank you. All right, our next item is ordinance number O. 2025-006-S1, which is amending the TMC, TMC 2.14, Execution of Contracts and Legal Documents. And City Administrator Parks will be presenting.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, councilmembers. I am here to talk to you, actually, on behalf of the management team. This is a project that's been talked about for quite a while from the department directors. And we've actually been talking about it, I think, actually, since before I arrived, almost two years ago now. And it's one of those projects that has taken a while to get here, but we were finally able to come up with a draft, and we've now been to the Budget and Finance Committee three different times this, this year. And had, and that's why the S1 is at the end of this ordinance number, because we've gone through a really great process of having good feedback from the council members, making adjustments to what we were proposing. And I hope this is a proposal that you will find satisfactory. So, I will get started here. So, basically, why are we requesting these changes? This ordinance, the, the content of this ordinance was first adopted by ordinance 2009-006, and it basically was defining and describing what the delegated authority was within the city for executing contracts and other legal documents. Since then, obviously, 2009, the city has grown rapidly, and hence, the workload and the volume of contracts has grown exponentially as well. We also look at these proposed amendments as an opportunity to be more timely and efficient in some of our operations around contracting and agreements. And the hope is that by becoming more efficient and timely with our internal operations around these processes, we would also have a better opportunity to align with our neighboring and partnering jurisdictions, because some of the, what we are referring to are inter-local agreements and MOUs that we have with other organizations in our community. So, essentially, what is being proposed? So, the content in, in your packet, you see the ordinance with all of the track changes version to the document. And this version is, as I mentioned, the one that was approved by the Budget and Finance Committee. In essence, what we came up with is, in the proposed amendments with relationship to inter-local agreements, MOUs, and any amendments thereto, the only things that would no longer require council approval would be amendments to those documents, and only in those conditions where they didn't exceed 10% of the original amount of the agreement that would have been identified, that there are sufficient funds available in order to move forward with that amendment change, and as long as the amendment was consistent with the original intent of the underlying agreement. The other thing that we're looking at in this case is instruments that convey real property, so these are documents that are related to property sales or purchasers. In this case, there was language added to the proposed ordinance that would accept out where dedications are being required as part of the development permit process, where there are temporary construction leases or right-of-ways that are required, and where there is an action being taken for a council-approved capital improvement project. So, in other words, a project that you've already reviewed and taken action on, and this is just implementing that capital improvement.
I think we have a question from Councilmember Althausser.
Just, just to be clear, when this says exceptions, that means when councilmatic approval is not required for the bullet points, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
So, thank you for that.
Otherwise, everything is the same.
Correct. These are, thank you for that. These are basically the instances with, when, when we would not have to come back to council for action on these different documents. Thank you for that, Councilmember Althausser. I get ahead of myself. The other component of this ordinance talks about the mayor's authority to delegate different actions and approvals to either myself or to department directors. Currently, the ordinance reads that contracts and agreements and documents and amendments thereto that she's delegated authority to act upon can be delegated to department directors currently, but there, there's a cap of $50,000 on those delegations. The amendments here would actually allow her to delegate to department directors as well as myself up to her authorized authority. That authorized authority is established by our CAW and currently is $100,000. So, anything that's $100,000 or less is currently delegated to the mayor, and these proposed changes would allow her to delegate her authority to department directors as well as to myself. This also provides some very specific types of agreements that would be accomplished with the mayor's authority specifically, the financial services contracts, legal service contracts, and then any changes to collective bargaining agreements. And there are some, some established parameters within that. For example, any change to a CBA would have to be valued at $100,000 or less and ensure that there were sufficient funds already in the budget in order to take that action. And then lastly, the other change that is being proposed is in regard to change orders. So, this would allow department directors to sign any change orders, not just for public works projects, which is what the current language is, but it would extend, extend that to other projects that have change orders associated with them that might not specifically be a public works project. But it, and it would retain the, the current parameters of that delegated authority for change orders at no more than 10% of the original amount of the contract, and as long as there are sufficient funds in the budget to do so. So, one of the things that the Budget and Finance Committee had us do while we were going through this process is, like, what are examples of documents that we've reviewed in 2024 that would be no long, would no longer come to the council as part of this, these proposed changes? It's a much smaller list than what it was under our original proposal when we were talking about actually allowing some inter-local agreements and MOUs that were low-dollar amounts to not come to the council at all. We made amendments to that, and essentially, right now, the only changes that would go to be delegated to not have to come back to council for action, again, are amendments, and only those amendments that are within 10% of the original contract amount, only where there are sufficient funds in the budget, and as long as the underlying intent of the agreement is not affected by those amendments. So, these are examples of actions that were brought to you in 2024 for action that would fall under these new exemptions and be taken act, no action would be required for council. So, the Franz Anderson Interlocal Agreement Amendment, it didn't change the dollar amounts. I believe it just extended the timeline. That's one example. The, the port had, we have an HCP interlocal agreement with the port. That added some activities and extended the timeline, but it didn't add any change in the dollar amounts. And the, the activities that were added were within this, the original intent of that agreement. The Advanced Life Saving Amendment Number Four with Thurston County, that again, didn't have any change in dollar amounts or outside the intent of the agreement. And you can see, we had, the other one, we had various, we have had various MOUs with lot over the last couple of years for potential property purchases. There were a couple of times where we needed to come to you for amendments to extend the timeline within which to do those, the work necessary on those MOUs. So, in this case, once the original MOU was adopted, we wouldn't necessarily have to come back to council for amendments. Several grant agreements would also, amendments to grant agreements would also be included in this, particularly where there weren't any. in this, particularly where there weren't any, any dollar amounts that were changed. Only, we do a lot of grant timeline amendments to extend the grant timelines and that type of thing. So the requested action is to adopt this particular ordinance and to, as, as it was recommended by the Budget and Finance Committee at their May 23rd meeting.
All right. Councilmember Dahlhoff.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Minister of Parks. One of the questions I have is, in the past, when we just updated the contracts, right? And there was some language of, it won't come to council if there's nothing substantially different, right? And so when the opportunity came for a new contract, there was a new name on that contract, but we were told it would not come to council. I, I still feel like a name change on a contract is substantive. So I guess I'm wondering, with the exception with those three criteria, how do you define consistent with the underlying intent and objectives of the original agreement? Where is that defined of what is enough change to come to council? Because I was under the understanding with the past with those executive contracts that it would come to council, and then to be told, well, it's not substantive change. So can you help me understand what that means, underlying intent?
I believe the intent of that particular process was to create a, an employment contract template, and it was described as being something that would be applied to the hiring of, of directors, both those that are currently in position, but those that had to be, that would be hired in, in the future. In that case, those employment contracts, as long as the, the provisions of those term, the terms that were in there, so the length of the contract, the, the amount of the severance, the position title, those types of things would be, as long as they were consistent, the agreement wouldn't come back to, to the council. And in this case, that was a specific action on a template. So in this case, this is about, more generally, agreements that fall within the parameters that are identified in the ordinance and are only amendments to those documents that have already been approved.
Thank you for that background on the other issue. I'm still unclear what this means and how you define that. So I'm in support of it overall, in general, but I still have concerns because of that last example of what I thought was happening, and then how it happened did not line up for me, and I still understand it, but I feel like I'm still confused with language, but we'll figure it out.
Do you have anything further, Karen?
There is no definition currently proposed in the ordinance. It's certainly something we could look at, and we can develop criteria that we can put in our purchasing guidelines. But most of the amendments that are examples, most of them are just timeframe. But sometimes there's rearranging of activities within, within that timeframe. So my interpretation would be those are all consistent with the underlying agreement. If it's, you know, something beyond that, I don't think we would probably dig, figure that was consistent, and it would come to the council, but we can.
Right. I feel like it's still too vague for me.
We can, we can certainly work on some criteria.
I would like that. Not just for us, but future state, right? As we move forward.
And if you have input on that, I'd love to hear it.
Thank you so much.
Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Althausser.
I guess, like, to that point, don't, I guess it sort of depends on the contract, but oftentimes, the contracts state the intent of the parties in terms of their goals and objectives within the language of the contract, correct?
Yes. This relates to interlocal agreements and grant contracts, and so typically, they would have a purpose statement, and it would be pretty clear what the purpose was.
Right, I get that. How are we defining a change in intent?
You can thank Councilmember Althausser for this idea.
I do thank you, and I still would like a little bit of understanding. Right, I get it. But there's been one recent example, what I thought did not happen. So now I'm like, I want to make sure that, what am I missing?
Sure.
So, thank you. I'm in support, and I, we'll talk about it later.
Okay. Any other questions?
I don't have a question.
Okay, great. Councilmember Althausser.
I would just sort of reiterate the evolution that I think this has undergone over the, the three different work sessions that we held on it in Budget and Finance. I'd also like to thank staff for your patience with us as we were working on it, too. There isn't a lot of things that we really take, like, three bites at the apple before presenting them, but I, I thought that this was, had enough gravity and was important enough that we really needed to be careful to get it right. I think that the purpose of this makes all the sense in the world to me in that I can think of at least a dozen more instances that weren't on the PowerPoint because they predated those ILAs and MOUs, where we're literally voting to extend it by six months or a year or two years. And everyone is going to vote yes on it throughout the process. Everyone wants to achieve it, and we just need to extend a timeline. And there's also been instances in the past year or two years where some of these things have unexpectedly crept up, and then we had to sort of jam them into a calendar, particularly at the end of the year. And that leads to a lot of stress for staff. It leads to challenges for us to be able to approve everything. And so I, I do think that what we have here is a healthy compromise that I think will improve administrative efficiencies a bit without sort of reaching too far within the prerogatives of the legislative branch. So if there aren't any other comments, I would make a motion, but I'll hold to see it.
We can always have comments after you make your motion, too.
With that, then, I would move that we adopt ordinance number O2025-006-S1, amending TMC 2.14, execution of contracts and other legal documents, as recommended by the Budget and Finance Committee at their May 23rd, 2025 meeting.
I'll second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Althausser, seconded by Councilmember Swarthout. Any comments or questions? Okay, with that, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay? All right, the motion carries. Thank you, everyone. And yes, this was a very robust, and, and I think what you will see, what, what this is, is like, not bringing it back because equipment is, you know, especially a lot of the contract, construction, we had to bring a lot of stuff back in, in short period of time that didn't have any bearing on anything, except staff time. So, yeah. All right, so now we're to committee reports. First one is Public Health and Safety, Councilmember Agabi.
Thank you, Mayor. I see that on June 10, we have on the calendar a list of performance data by the Attorney Chief of Police. That's the only thing we have on the calendar.
Great. Next is General Government Committee.
Thank you, Mayor. The General Government Committee has not met since our last meeting, but we are meeting a week from tomorrow, and we have a pretty robust agenda in store. We're going to be talking about the 2025 Comp Plan Update, the conservation element in particular. We'll also be going over an ADU interlocal agreement that will examine, as well as a unit service provider agreement, also regarding ADUs. And then we have two other items on our agenda, the Thurston County Specialized Recreation Agreement, as well as a service provider agreement for a planned action EIS, which particularly excited for that one.
Great, thank you. Next is Public Works Committee, Councilmember Swarthout.
Thank you, Mayor. We will be meeting on Thursday, June 5th at 8:00 a.m., and on our agenda, we have an ordinance number renewing the Puget Sound Energy Franchise Agreement. We have a supplemental agreement with Tierra Rightofway for the X Street Roundabout Project. And best, I know this is going to get a lot of people watching, we have a real estate contract with Lot for purchase of Deschutes Valley Properties. So set your alarm for 8 o'clock, we will be there.
Thank you. Budget and Finance Committee, we had, we had just adopted what we went on our last one, and we will be meeting on June 13th, and we will be having interviews with grant applicants. And which grant was that one for? Community and Human Services. Geez, I don't know why I couldn't think of that. So, yeah, so we'll be having the interviews for that, and then those grants and the adoption will come to council. So now we have Mayor City Administrator Report and City Administrator Parks.
Thank you, Mayor. Once again, just a couple of pieces of information for you. So this Saturday is the first of our strategic planning work, work sessions with Amy Leniker. We will be getting you information hopefully on Thursday, possibly Friday, but it is information that you'll be able to flip through and be ready for. We hope it's going to be a good interactive session, similar to our Fri, February roundtable discussion that we had at our last work sessions, strategic planning work sessions in 2024. So that's Saturday, this Saturday from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. at the fire station just across the parking lot here. I understand the Elevate Fair went very well this last weekend. There was great attendance, great participation and engagement from the community, as well as the city in, in form of council and staff, and the mayor. Water Resources and Parks collaborated on that event. It's sort of, it was a collaboration between, and bringing local cultures and arts and bringing it together where it intersects with sustainability and meeting the challenges of climate change. So thank you very much to our staff and our community for, for that, and for Osho Cultural Center for hosting. We are continuing to work on distributing the Community Engagement Survey. We have, most recently, there's been some walkabouts happening throughout town where they've distributed flyers for people in different places where people gather in the community, so they can access the QR codes and the website in order to be able to take that survey. That comes on the heels of the social media campaign, website, and email that we asked council to participate with us, and there is more to come. That survey is going to be open through midnight on June 20th, so we're hoping to get as many people participating in that as possible. And at next week's work session, DHM Research will be here to give you some top-line results from the statistically valid survey, so you'll get sort of an initial taste of some of the responses, at least in that version of the, of the survey. To date, we've got almost 200 people that have already completed the Community Engagement Survey, so that's a good, good result within the first couple of weeks. There is a note here that on Thursday, June 5th, the community is invited to a Discover the Legacy of the Centennial Rose Garden at Schmidt House. This is a, an event put on by the Olympia Tumwater Foundation. It does not cost anything. Doors open at 11:30, and the program begins at noon at the 3:30 Schmidt Place Southwest. And then I just wanted to make note of the fact that the weekend after that, on Saturday, June 14th, is Dog Days at Pioneer Park. That's always a, a lot of fun, where we celebrate the companionship between humans and our furry friends. So please visit the website on the Parks page for more information on Dog Days, and I'm sure we'll have an opportunity to talk about that again, maybe next week. And with that, that is my report.
Great, thank you. And for my report, I attended, so last Wednesday on the 28th of April, I spent my whole day in Tonino. We, we had our EDC Economic Development Council Board meeting was at the Agricultural Innovation Park in Tonino, which is totally amazing, and what, what amount of work went into making that a reality. So after our EDC meeting there, they actually, that afternoon, had the grand opening celebration, and there was several hundred people there. There was a lot of people. And I think we've posted on our Facebook, and I've seen a lot of others, the monument or the signage for the building there was all done by Tonino stone carvers, and it's, and it's very beautiful. So it's amazing doing this for local agriculture, and I think it'll help our whole region. It'll be expanding quite a lot, so if anybody has an opportunity to go visit, I would strongly suggest it. That was the only meeting I had since our last council meeting, other than attending events. And I just want to mention that I will not be at next work session. I will be attending my granddaughter's graduation from the University of Washington, so we're very excited about that. That is great accomplishment, her, she got her degree in education, and so she is wanting to be an elementary school teacher. So I, I'm really excited for her to find her career. So Mayor Protem Dahlhoff will be chairing that meeting. So she will be chairing that meeting, so. All right, with that, we will go to Councilmember Reports. I'm going to go into Zoom land first. Councilmember Kathy, do you have anything?
Well, first of all, I want to congratulate you, Grandma, on the graduation of your granddaughter from, from this Washington, University of Washington. It's always a great thing when those that, that we know and we love, and especially the young people, accomplish something like that. And so I'm, I'm proud of you and her mom and dad, and anybody who's been involved in, in her life. That's great.
I just might add, her father is a WSU grad. I know, so it created all kinds of drama in the family.
So now you're going for family counseling.
Yeah.
Well, anyway, I think it's, having been an old educator myself, it's so great to see young people just, you know, success as they move along in life. I have had, I don't have any meetings coming up until Thursday, and Thursday starts this month's round of meetings, so that's my report.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Jefferson.
Thank you, Mayor. My report is on the 22nd of May. I attended EMS Council Meeting, where we discussed budget development for '26 and ' '27, and the arrival of the first new medic unit, and the completion of EMC Class 2025. One of the major portion of the meeting was, we discussed the suboxone rollout to the community as part of the opioid response plan. The opioid task force is the beginning stages of determining how to use the settlement money received from opioid manufacturers and distributors. These funds will be shared among the three cities and the county. We also discussed the peer navigator program, where we discussed barriers to access and care, and how the peer navigators help with transportation, scheduling, and communication issues. This program is a pilot and will be evaluated and adjusted as needed. And that is my report in my one and only meeting.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Von Holtz. Hold on one moment while I turn on your microphone. There you go.
It's good not to have it on all the time. Thank you, Mayor. On last, tomorrow, I have intercity transit, and at the last intercity transit meeting, we were able to vote to approve the contract for the drivers, which took a very long time and took a toll on everyone, and so we're all very happy to have that completed and approved, and so that was great. So we meet again tomorrow. On Sunday, I attended New Life Baptist Church's 50th anniversary, which, if you ever need chicken soup for your soul, attend an event at New Life Baptist Church, because you will come, you will leave feeling way better than you did when you walked in those doors. The one thing, though, after the event is I was talking to Dr. Jackson, and she mentioned something that we did, not on purpose, but we passed the resolution that came up through Public Health and Safety against, where we spoke out against hate, and all cities and the county did proclamations. Tumwater did a resolution, which technically would mean more, except for the resolution was approved in a consent agenda, so it was never read for the public. So I just want to acknowledge that that wasn't done on purpose, and if there's ever an opportunity, maybe, maybe during the work session next week in honor of June honor of Juneteenth, we could read, read the resolution. That's what I would like to propose to do. And that's my report.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Agabi.
Thank you, Mayor. So on June 9, Monday, June 9, I have the Joint Animal Services Committee meeting. And on June 10, I have the Public Health and Safety meeting. And on Wednesday, June 11, I have the Transportation Board meeting. And of course, we have the Budget and Finance on Friday, June 13. That's my report.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Dahlhoff.
Thank you, Mayor. There was another meeting you went to, because I saw you there, Thurston Thrives, last week.
Oh, yeah. There's so many meetings.
They all blend together, but it was a good one. So Thurston Thrives, the breakfast for the electeds, where they talked about community health and Choice was there. And one thing that did come up that made my eyebrow go up is that Choice is doing a pilot with FD Cares in Olympia about referrals. And so I was like, wait a second, we're doing FD Cares, right, in Tom Water? So that would be a follow-up of what comes out of that pilot, how that could be applied to the services we're doing in Tom Water. So I thought that was interesting, right? It was nice to see the mayor there. Then I also, what am I doing? What am I looking at? Thurston County Overdose Response Task Force was just yesterday. And a while ago, we had talked about the Narcan Leave Behind when someone is experiencing overdose. They have just now extended that to Suboxone. And so that started a couple days ago and they've already had a handful of uses in Leave Behind. And that just made me think about what we're doing and the assignments that we have and what we're learning, the services that we're providing. And it just goes back to the mayor reading the Pride proclamation. And so I just wanted to, I just wrote this because it just, it's all coming together for what we're doing, that I'm proud that the city of Tom Water stands together to celebrate the rich diversity of all of our identities and experiences that make us stronger, more compassionate, and more connected. And that belonging isn't just a feeling, it's a shared responsibility. And it goes back to the assignments that we're doing and the work that we're doing and what we bring back to the city. So when we show up for one another with empathy, respect, and love, we create the kind of world where everyone can thrive. So I just appreciate the opportunity, Mayor, for the assignments that we have and the work that we're able to do and bring back, because it is making a difference in our community. That's my report.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Althauser.
Thank you, Mayor. I, we had a busy week at the Regional Housing Council last week. We had a meeting this past Wednesday and then also a half-day retreat this past Friday. So I will highlight maybe some of the high-line agenda items, first from the council meeting and then the gist of the retreat. From the Regional Housing Council meeting, we renewed our lived experience housing steering committee. That's a group of subject matter experts who provide consultative advice to the council as well as to our other steering committees. That was sort of, I don't want to say an experiment, when we first decided to embark on, on having a lived experience steering committee, but it has really, really helped us in our decision-making processes and making sure that we are making as informed decisions as possible. We also got a funding update about funding in terms of legislative investment in our community. As everyone knows, it's been a difficult budget year for the state legislature and some of the funding that we have relied on in the past, we still are going to receive some, but, but notably less than we have in years past, which means that our challenges will only grow, right? We already weren't receiving enough funds in order to meet the need in our community and now funds are going to be even tighter. That got us to voting on our encampment resolution program, also known as the Right-of-Way Program. There's all sorts of different components of that, whether it's street outreach or Maple Court in Lacey, that's the hotel that was converted into permanent supportive housing. There's a number of other initiatives in there. For the last fiscal year, we had $9.9 million to spend to try to support encampment resolution or right-of-way. And this coming year, we have 5.5. So it is a little more than half of what we had, and that is due to reductions in what was appropriated from the legislature. So we had to make some pretty hard decisions about funding for some things. The money for outreach is significantly reduced. There were requests to increase funding for Maple Court and Maple Court only received sort of a, not really a cost of living adjustment, but kind of an inflationary increase over the past couple of years. But there's a number of things where we just don't have the funding to be able to fund the services the way that we did in the past couple of years. So there were a lot of really tough decisions. And those recommendations came to us from our Homeless Services Advisory Committee. That was one of the other lived experience committees that we set up to ensure that the recommendations coming before us aren't made in a vacuum, that they're made with the input and context of folks who are literally sometimes living or have experienced homelessness in recent years, service providers and all sorts of other folks, just community members who are interested and wanted to provide input. In terms of our retreat, that was a half-day on Friday and we knew that we weren't going to finish on time, so we sort of limited what we were, our objectives and our goals to trying to establish mission, vision, and values. And I'd say we got about 75% of the way there. I think we still need to refine the values. But really sort of central to this, I think, is what is, what is next for the Regional Housing Council? It started off as the ad hoc committee, where it was just Tom Water, Lacey, and Olympia meeting to talk about how are we gonna, how are we gonna fix housing? And eventually the county became involved and then it became the RHC. And I think now there's a desire from some members, including personally myself, to see if there are other ways that we can be creative with our collective impact and collective resources and knowledge to try to deploy those things to improve housing across jurisdictional lines, particularly in, in my opinion, in the policy space on if there is room to where the RHC could be making recommendations about certain policies. So we had a robust discussion about what that would look like, as well as the impact that that could have on staff, on jurisdictions, not unlike our own, where we don't have as many staff that are just solely dedicated to housing as jurisdictions like Olympia or the county. So that was a really great discussion. We're going to schedule another half-day retreat to put a bow on it and then to talk about next steps as well. That's my report.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Sorthout.
Thank you, Councilmember Raltheuser. That was a lot. I appreciate that update. So for my report, I didn't have any meetings, but I will have the Thurston Regional Planning Council meeting on Friday. And of particular interest, we'll be reviewing the, excuse me, the regional transportation plan. We received, it went out to for public comment from April 11 to May 9, and it received 279 comments. So that'll be, that'll be interesting to have some discussion on that, so that'll be coming up. And I, too, attended the Elevate Fair and I just want to shout out to the gentleman that said that we're fun. We are fun. And so we have fun staff. And so I just want to shout out for the people that were there, that it's such a great opportunity to meet the community and get to share and, and then see our staff in action. I just, you know, can't say enough about Alyssa Jones Woods. She's just amazing. She really is. She's such a treasure. And then also having the opportunity to talk to Britt Bowman, because the Arts Commission has been something I've been really interested in, and so I got a chance to talk with her and, and we pushed the community survey and I got to meet Jason's son, who I thought was in college and he's not even in high school, and he's an eighth grader. So just want to shout out, yeah, your very tall son. So it was a great day and so it was a really super event. So I appreciate all the time and effort that went into it.
Yeah, the Elevate Fair was amazing for the very first year and, and I visited, dropped a lot of money at different vendors there, yes. They had some amazing things to purchase.
Yeah, I did buy some, there was an amazing artist there.
Amazing artists there, so.
Yep.
All right, so with no other business, we are adjourned for the evening. Thank you, everyone.